Good morning. It is Monday, December the 7th, 2020. We are here today for one of our board workshops. And the workshop is on resolutions discussion. And Ms. Fisher is here online. Are you here with us, Ms. Fisher?
Yes, ma'am, I'm here.
Thank you. Glad to have you here. Ms. McClung, I'm going to turn this over to you. Thank you.
Good morning. Nice to see everyone this morning. So, as you mentioned, our purpose this morning is to complete our discussion around acknowledgements and resolutions. So I wanted to begin with just a reminder of your definition that you agreed to the last time on acknowledgements and resolutions. So the guidelines for the acknowledgement are that they must be in alignment with the mission, vision, and value of the district, and relate to one or more of the following areas. You can see those: education, health, safety, welfare of children and youth, history of a group, culture, or heritage, family, community engagement, and education, or recognition of the work of district employees. Board resolutions, the only difference between the acknowledgement and the resolution is that the resolution requires some form of action. There was a suggestion that perhaps the action was that it would be read at a board meeting as opposed to an acknowledgement which would not be read at a board meeting. So with those differences in mind, we're going to take a look back at the list, the historical list of resolutions that have been read in the past or have appeared on agendas in the past. So if you see the blue, these are areas that of the information I received back from board members, no one had marked that as a resolution. So those I just designated for the time being as an acknowledgement because there was no discussion or no one had put down that they felt that one of those should be a resolution. So, yes, ma'am.
Do we have that? Because mine doesn't, is not.
Mine doesn't.
Yeah, mine's, we didn't get that.
I didn't highlight it either.
The colors I added like five minutes ago.
That's why.
Abuse today. Just freeze abuse today. So, because when I was looking at them and trying to decide how to go about it, I thought it was a little easier to see them rather than to try and go all the way across and read them. What you have just has the listing on it.
Can you, is it possible to just shoot us an email real quick with that?
Yes, and it is in the LICPEC folders. If you look at those presentations, that's where it is right now. But I can certainly send it to you in an email real fast.
Where did you say?
I'm sorry, where is that? Cindy's a little slow.
If you, if you go to the little square at the right-hand side of, I'm sorry, the left-hand corner of your screen, and go to department links.
Oh, we're going to learn something today.
Department?
I don't see department.
Oh, yeah, we have it. Go to your search. Go to your search. Department links.
And LCPUC presentations.
Yes. Go to your search button, your square.
Board meetings.
I see department, but...
Oh, yeah.
Perfect.
I have no idea what you're talking about.
Oh. Yeah, this was in search.
No.
My chair.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, I can see that from my home computer. Can they send me a link?
Sure.
Tell her she can from her, oh, okay. This one?
Yes.
Ah, fantastic. Thank you.
A resolution. Thank you so much. Ms. McClung, could you please send Ms. Fisher?
Yes, I sure will. Send it right now.
Thank you so much.
No.
If you go into... I don't know.
Where, where?
Where's your icon?
You can open it on here.
Which one?
Would you?
I don't know where to look.
It's not, it's saying, well, if you click on read only.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, if you click on read only, it opens.
Oh. Because it's, I don't think I can get there.
No, no.
Four minutes.
I gotta get my context fixed.
Before I turn off my computer, I hold that button down.
Let me see, can you close up some of those screens?
I don't want to go.
Yeah. Yep. Close them all out.
And then resolution history. It's Excel. Excel down here. See, I need to get my context fixed.
And then go to read only.
Thank you.
And this is where I find stuff.
Ms. Javonelli, you got, you want? Thank you for this pause in time. It just, this will make it easier for everybody to look at. And Ms. Fisher, you should be receiving that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
A question for Cindy.
Okay, when she finishes, send it to me.
I don't see Pride Month. Is it?
Send it to everyone so you don't have to keep searching.
We do, we do have it.
Debbie found it.
We do have it.
She found it.
So we're good whenever.
I thought that was in June.
I'm sorry?
I just sent it to you.
It's October.
It's not on the bottom. Go to the bottom.
I apologize. I thought you could see it on your screens when I pulled it up here. So I didn't think to send it to you separately.
All the way down, Glenn.
Do you know the name of the?
The resolution, historical data.
So the highlighted is what?
Ms. McClung, as soon as, whenever you are ready, Ms. Vaughn has a question for you.
Okay, just one moment, and let me get this in the right place.
Now, that's History Month, but Pride Month is in June.
No, no, it's not.
It's in your files.
No, it depends on September. It's Pride Month.
Hmm, okay. Let me look it up.
And it depends on where you're at.
I'm closing now. Right back to me. Still not come through.
Oh, yeah, they have it in June.
Uh-huh. I knew it was June.
Cindy sent it out. I'm sorry? Cindy sent it out too?
I'm thinking October.
Okay, I just sent it to all of you, so you should all be able to see it now. Ms. Vaughn, did you have a question?
Yeah, I did. And I'm going to use, and I know this is historical, and LGBTQ History Month is new. But when we had that discussion, I didn't realize that even as we spoke, there were things being sent to all the schools. The decals and lots of material was being sent to the schools. So what I wanted to know is, are there any other months that already have, or weeks maybe, that already have an action that Academic Services, or Equity and Diversity, or some other department in the school is already sending information to the schools? Because that would seem like a no-brainer that there's already an action taking place. So do we know that?
I will have to check with Academic Services on that. But I will check on that, and let's see. Mr. Spiro. Dr. Spiro.
Right there.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Good morning.
There we go. Good morning, actually. Good morning to everybody. Thank you. Yes, oftentimes we are notified by FL DOE on certain celebrations that they are going to be focusing on throughout the course of the year. Oftentimes, we get those about a month, or maybe a little bit more than a month, in advance of that celebration.
And is there a history on that? Because what I'm thinking is, I, you know, and the whole LGBT, that's a whole different issue. But, you know, we vote no, and/or get rid of something, and then a department is sending things to the schools. I really think we need to be in sync with that. And it would be helpful to me to know. Like, I'm assuming there are things in the curriculum for African-American history. Okay, are there any others that jump out? Women's history, or?
Sure, Hispanic Heritage Month, Women's History, Black History. All of those are certainly ones that are historically, over the last few years, have been part of what is sent out through DOE. If you'd like, I could get a list, work it through my coordinators of what we've done in the past, so you have that list of what we have celebrated.
Yeah, and again, I don't know how the rest of the board members feel. But if we're already sending things to the schools for some of these, it seems like we need to, you know, touch base on that as a board and recognize it maybe as more than an acknowledgement.
And if I, if I may too, I don't believe that. I think that Equality Florida sent us, it's not just for that certain month. They send that out periodically, information to be disseminated throughout the state. So I don't know if the other organizations, if there's other organizations that do that. Like Dr. Spiro just said, that, you know, they, we have a lot of this on here already that the state has told us about. But for instance, for that one, I think they did, pretty much a statewide notification, I guess. And that's when they put all that stuff together and started sending all of that out.
But I believe our Equity and Diversity Department created. The visual, the one with like the hearts and the different colors? Wasn't that created by Equity and Diversity?
Ms. Fisher, I know you're on that committee on the state. That came from Equality Florida, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, I thought so. Thank you. Yeah, so that's where it's coming from. Go ahead, please.
Yes, so Equality Florida has, and they died to be part comprised of school board members from around the state, number one. And number two, our Equity and Diversity Department has been working with them since their inception. And Equality Florida has presented in our district, I think, for the last two or three years. And there is a long history starting back in the eighties with the LGBTQ plus issue.
For that, I just wanted clarification. That's what I.
Yeah, but I'm not sure you, with all due respect, I'm not sure you understood my point. My point is that a department here in the district sent these things out right in the same timeframe that we, as a board, rejected it as a month to be recognized. And frankly, and I know that's a hot-button issue, but I, as a board member, don't want to see a situation like that happen again where we're literally sending things to schools, but we, as a board, don't recognize that.
I understand what you're saying.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, thank you. Ms. Gittens?
Yeah, well, my, my question, based on what Dr. Spiro was saying, that DOE has certain things that they will send out. It sounds as though DOE has a list, our Equity and Diversity Department has a list of what they do, and then the other organization that you were saying, you know, there's a lot of different lists. And I agree with what, you know, is being said that.
Vaughn.
Ms. Vaughn, sorry. I got a brain fart there. That we're not coinciding together with what's going on. So I think when all the thing came up with the LGBTQ and the History Month, and we weren't, at least I wasn't aware that of the things that were already out there and happening in the schools. An example, a question that I have is, someone mentioned to me, well, June is Pride Month. So are we going to do two different months for LGBTQ? And so my question has to do with, have we, in the past, in the schools, done anything with Pride Month in June? And if so, then, I mean, we're kind of looking at, which one are we going to do? Are we going to do both, or, you know? And then that's not fair to the other organizations and things that we're trying to represent. So first off, I would like to know from DOE and Equity and Diversity, what is the list of things that they feel that we are supposed to either recognize or acknowledge? And I recall when we first started this conversation quite a while ago, maybe it was last year. And there was a statement made that we would ask Equity and Diversity to give us a list of, you know, recognized days or months or whatever. And it was going to be based on whether it was nationally recognized. We did have that conversation. So I don't know where that went beside the wayside, or what.
You are correct. Ms. Patrica?
Ms. McClung, white means nobody wanted it to be, what, what's white and blue mean?
Blue means that no one had marked it as being a resolution, only an acknowledgement. However, I did just receive one, so I'm writing down those to see if maybe some of those conflict. But of the ones I'd received earlier, if they were blue, everyone agreed those should be an acknowledgement.
So blue should be an acknowledgement, white should be a resolution. That's.
White was up for discussion. Some had said resolution, some had said not.
Okay, so let's say, first of all, I think, I think we're confusing issues here. Board action means reading a resolution, and it doesn't mean distributing educational materials in the schools. That's what staff does. So whether staff distributes information in the schools or makes it part of the curriculum is really, I think, irrelevant to our conversation. I'm wondering what it is we hope to accomplish at today's workshop? And is there a systematic way we could go about accomplishing that goal?
Thank you. Yes, our goal was to make a decision on anything that is white, whether you would like that to be a resolution. And if it is to be a resolution, then what action would be taken? Would it be that it would just be read at the board meeting? Or was there other action that the board deemed necessary for those items?
Okay, so that, that doesn't, that doesn't feel to me like a process that we would follow to determine what should be a resolution. I thought we were going to kind of put together a list of criteria that we could then run each of these through in order to determine whether.
We did, and that's what I showed at the very beginning, where I read those, the difference between the guidelines for resolutions and acknowledgements. So the criteria that you agreed upon was that it would be in alignment with the mission, vision, and value, that it would be related to the education, health, safety, or welfare of children or youth, the history of a group, culture, or heritage, a family, community engagement, and education, or recognition of the work of district employees. That was the criteria that you came to consensus on back in November.
And are these, can I just ask real quick, on here, the things that you've already put on there, did you put that based on what we said?
These items were ones that.
No, no, no. I mean, what you just took down are.
This?
That.
This, this is what you agreed to at an earlier meeting back in November.
Okay, and there were different things placed under education, welfare, and history, and so on and so forth?
These were just examples that were given here. This was the criteria that you were to apply to this list when you gave me your list of what you wanted to be a resolution or what you wanted to be an acknowledgement. When you were marking that list, it was to be based upon this criteria.
Ms. Morgan?
Yeah, so everything in blue, we're going to read a resolution?
No, blue was acknowledgement.
Okay, that's what I wanted to be, all right. Thank you.
That was the one that no one said resolution, so there was agreement that it didn't need to be considered as a resolution.
Thank you.
Ms. Patrica?
Ms. Patrica?
No, I thought the only difference between acknowledgements and resolutions was action by the board.
Yes, ma'am.
So that's, what we have in our board protocols is not really a list of criteria we, as a board, could use to objectively determine what should be a resolution and what should be an acknowledgement. So.
What do we do?
Right?
The discussion back in November was that the only difference was whether or not the board chose to take an action such as reading that resolution, that really the criteria was the same.
Right. So basically, we're just going to go through this list and take a vote?
Basically, there would just be a discussion as to whether you, I, my personal preference would be to start with, are there any that you feel strongly, do we need resolutions? And if we do have resolutions, if you agree that, yes, we should have resolutions, then we'll need to go through each of those and decide which ones you want to read. Yes, ma'am.
Well, I understand the difference between a board action and reading aloud. But I, as I said earlier, maybe not as clearly as I should have, I think if we are going to take the time to read something out loud, that it needs to be somehow reflected in our schools. And my point was, there are some of these that have historically been reflected in our schools, not just from a general mailing from some national organization, but from a department in our district, typically Academic Services or Equity and Diversity. And if they're already doing that, I think it behooves us as a board, and I'm going to say that, you know, that the LGBTQ is an excellent example of that because it wasn't just something that a national or state organization sent. It was something, an action that was taken by our school department, our district department.
Yes, ma'am, such as.
I think that behooves us to take a board action.
So you're suggesting, and I'm asking, I'm not saying for sure, are you suggesting that we start with those that we know action takes place in the schools, such as National Black History Month?
Black History, the Women's History, the Hispanic, the LGBTQ. And I'm not sure which others, you know, there's some that are a week. And, you know, I know the schools do Read Across America.
In March, yes. They usually do that around Dr. Seasteak.
There's some others. The bullying, the bullying's a good example too. Because do we not, that's something where posters appear at the school, and there's a particular emphasis.
We have curricula around those items, yes.
And there's curriculum, and that's the point that I was trying to make. If we have curriculum, if we have historically done something in the classrooms, to me, it behooves us as a board to do more than just recognize. That's my opinion.
Ms. Fisher, yes, I'm sorry. I was going to come to you.
I really have.
Okay, yes, so thank you. So Red Ribbon Week, we have an activity in all, in many of our schools, as well as at the district office. And so that would be, I'm using that as an example, that would be a recognition, a resolution, rather. So when, I didn't know if anybody wanted to consider the fact that when our governmental agencies, our sister agencies like the cities and the county commission, do these recognitions, many of which are national, shouldn't we be in lockstep with them, number one? And especially, as Mrs. Vaughn eloquently made the point, that we have many activities taking place in our schools. And so I think that would warrant us to read a resolution. And back to the LGBTQ issue, all of our high schools and most of our middle schools have a GSA club, which is a gay straight alliance, and they have been in existence for many years.
Thank you, Ms. Fisher.
Thank you.
So based upon that conversation, I would suggest that we go through this really quickly. Look at the ones that we know for sure, we have curriculum around, and make those decisions. And then it seems that there is some information that you're waiting for from Dr. Spiro's, from the coordinators, and we may need to wait on those decisions if you feel that information is needed before you can move forward.
Ms. Gittens?
And can I just make one other thought or suggestion? If it's a month as opposed to a week, would that not put more importance on it? That it was given an entire month to be recognized? If we could differentiate that, it might cut our list down a bit. That if something was a nationally recognized month, then that could determine a resolution as opposed to recognizing, because there are so many more weeks for different things?
Okay, so board members, you've heard that suggestion. So as we go through, if you want to keep that in mind, let's start with.
Ms. Javonelli had a question.
Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Javonelli.
No, no, I just want to, I agree, I say we try to get through the list like you just suggested, and then I think we can come back around to the, to the conversation for the LGBT, because I have some other ideas that I would like to talk about, but it's not really pertinent to going through the list right now.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so let's start quickly with Celebrate Literacy Week. Dr. Spiro, do you know, do the coordinators send information out for that? Are you aware? Okay, so we do have action within the school based on Celebrate Literacy Week. So using that as one of your criteria, that was a suggestion, do we have, excuse me, consensus that that would be listed as a resolution? I'm seeing no's and yeses. Okay, so let's do a thumbs up. If you believe Celebrate Literacy Week should be listed as a resolution and read at the board during, during a board action meeting, please give me a thumbs up. No, okay, so I'm going to take that as that is now an acknowledgement.
Okay.
Ms. Fisher, I'm so sorry. What was your vote?
My vote is yes.
Okay, Ms. Fisher's was yes. Ms. Fisher, there are no other yes votes. Can you live with it being an acknowledgement?
Thank you. Yes.
Thank you. Okay, so the next item is Career and Technical Education Month. Now, this one is a month. Dr. Spiro, I would assume we do have information there on Career and Technical Education Month? So what is your decision on this with giving me a thumbs up if you wish this to be a resolution? One, two, three. Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
A yes, I see. One, two, three, that makes four yess. One, I can live with it. Two, I can live with it, and one, no. Ms. Patrica, what would it take?
There is no criteria upon which we're basing this. So inside my brain, I'm basing it on the criteria of recognizing racial or ethnic diversity. Those are the ones to which I will agree. But I don't see any clear criteria beyond that, and it's just, that's why I said no.
Okay, so if we go back to the Career and Tech Education Week, and if we go back to the criteria of either resolutions or recognitions, it was education, health, safety, or welfare of children, so that would relate to education of students. And it would possibly relate to work of district employees, depending on what was done during that week if it, if it looked at career and tech education.
And you're asking whether I want this to be a resolution, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
So I would prefer that it be an acknowledgement, and I believe it meets the criteria for acknowledgement as well, yes?
Absolutely, yes.
My answer is no for resolution.
Okay.
But then what is, I'm sorry, what is the action? Because that's supposed to have an action to that. So what would our action be, other than just reading it?
If it were to be a resolution, the board would read it during an action meeting. And in this case, there is action taken in the schools to recognize that month.
In other words, there's already action being taken.
Ms. Vaughn?
Isn't it part of Envision 2030?
Yes, ma'am.
Isn't it a major thrust from Tallahassee? I think it behooves us to include it.
All right, so right now I see that we have one that still is.
Ms. Javonelli?
Well, my only thing is, we should be doing this 12 months out of the year, not just one month. That's, I mean, so, and yes, because that is the. That's, I mean, so, yes, because that is the vision, but, I mean, regardless, I mean, we should be doing this for our students, so I don't know that we need a resolution. Our actions should be 24/7 towards this. So I don't know that we single it out, I think acknowledgement and our continuing our efforts to educate and guide, but, and I don't understand why we're going to make it a resolution. I mean, we should be doing it. It should be a given.
I'll take him. Ms. Kittens?
And I understand what Ms. Javonelli is saying, however, across the state and probably throughout the county as well, there will be people during that Career and Technical Education Month that will be recognizing even more so our efforts that are continuing throughout the year, but this is a particular time to spotlight it.
Okay, then we spotlight something, you know, a career tech job that, and that's maybe acknowledged for that month, I guess, I don't...
Well, no, I don't, I think where the confusion, it's not that we have to do anything major to spotlight that particular thing for that month, it's just, we'll have a resolution that, you know, saying, this is that month. And in the schools simultaneously, and in DOE, and then throughout the district, there are things going on that will also spotlight it. So that would be our contribution to that.
I think this goes back to...
Madam Chair.
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Yes, okay, so Career and Tech Education Month is nationally celebrated, and so I don't know if that's a significant fact, but it's, and they have a public awareness campaign that takes place each February to celebrate the value of career and tech ed and the achievements and accomplishments of the career and tech ed programs across the country. And then it gives a list of how districts can celebrate TTE Month, and that's a national effort.
It doesn't say national, so that helps.
Yeah, she's correct, I see it here, but it's recognized mainly by the career and technical, career and technical education are the ones who have done the resolutions for them, the proclamations. So you're right.
Okay, so I have added national to that to clarify, and Mrs. Morgan has a question.
Ms. Morgan?
Yeah, Mrs. Morgan has a comment. We have a bunch of these to go through, we have one hour.
Yes, ma'am.
We've already voted on this, we've heard two people explain why they wouldn't support it. Do we want to revote and move on? I mean, we don't need to discuss every single one of these.
Exactly.
Please.
Thank you. All right, we have one more vote, so that I'm clear where you would like this to be. Do you want National Career and Technical Education Month to be a resolution? Thumbs up.
Yes, we voted...
Well, we had a thumbs down, which generally does not mean consensus has been reached, but if we're going to take it as a vote, then in that case, this one would come to resolution, and I will make those yellow so that they're easy to see. Okay, the next one is National Black History Month. We've heard a lot of discussion around that, thumbs up if you would like that to be a resolution. Thank you.
I say yes.
Thank you, Ms. Fisher. Thank you. National School Counseling Week. Okay, I see at least four thumbs down, so that one will remain as an acknowledgement.
I say yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Okay, did you, I'm sorry, can you clarify for me? I thought you said the blue was an acknowledgement and the white was a...
Conversation.
The white were for conversation to make a decision which way they would go. The blue was acknowledgement. You're welcome. Okay, so there, Ms. Fisher, there were, there were four no votes on School Counseling Week, I know you can't see the thumbs, so that one is now an acknowledgement.
Thank you.
And the next one is Irish-American Heritage Month. Two thumbs down, one, two thumbs up. One side, Ms. Morgan, what is your vote?
Thumbs down.
I'm sorry, I didn't, I'm sorry, Mrs. Fisher, I'm so sorry.
Fisher?
I'm sorry, there's...
Irish-American Heritage Month?
I'm okay with an acknowledgement.
So how many, would you put your thumbs back up? I think there were only two thumbs up, so that one would remain, and three thumbs up.
Can I just make a statement on this one? This is one that is recognized quite well in our schools, you know, I don't know what, what is it, the...
St. Patrick's Day?
St. Patrick's Day, and, thank you, I'm just losing it today, but the schools do, so, anyway.
Madam Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
If we're looking at ethnicity, I think we need to be consistent with all the different ethnicities, and that might get us...
Yes.
Most likely.
So what is her vote, because that would change?
But the, when we get down, thank you for that, but I do see when we get down here that it, there's an acknowledgement, and that was for the National Hispanic Heritage, and I know I just jumped, but I think that we have always done that as a resolution, and to take that away, and I understand what you're saying, how do you, how do you forget about the Italians? How do you forget, we're all Americans, well, we're not, we're all here, we're all Americans, so how do we, yeah, I agree with you, it's hard to pick and choose who you celebrate and who you don't.
Also, the ones that I received today actually had the, all of the heritage ones as resolutions, so, but I had not seen those until I got here, so those will...
Okay.
Would change back to white. So if you choose to do all of the heritage ones, I agree that it would make sense for them to all be one or the other.
And all of the heritage ones are months, is that not true? For the most part.
So let's, let's change this slightly, and let's have a consensus vote around any heritage months. Do you prefer for all, since there was this discussion that they should all be the same, either all resolutions or all acknowledgements? So we're looking at Hispanic Heritage Month, Irish-American Heritage Month, Italian-American Heritage Month, American, Indiana Heritage Month, Jewish-American, and Caribbean-American.
Okay, but now, we get into the same situation again, and I, because who are we missing, and who's going to be offended if we do not call, are we saying that if you're Haitian, that's considered Caribbean?
Yeah.
And I just think we really need to be careful and cautious on that we're not celebrating one and not the other, when it comes to the people. We have to be really careful. So it's safer to have an acknowledgement, I believe, than it is to have resolutions.
I agree.
Yep.
Okay, could we have a consensus vote around that? That would be that all heritage months would be acknowledgements.
I think we have to.
Madam Chair, my vote is yes.
Thank you.
And in doing research, Congress has proclaimed March as Irish-American Heritage Month in 1991, and the President issued the proclamation every year for that. So I think if we look through that, we'll see that they want to be consistent with all ethnicities. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I'm confused.
Ms. Fisher, I just want to be clear, when you said yes, are you saying yes, that it should be an acknowledgement?
Or a resolution.
Or a resolution?
A resolution.
A resolution, okay, so the consensus that we asked for was, do you believe they should all be acknowledgements? So let's start with that. If you believe they should all be acknowledgements, I see one, two, three. Ms. Javonelli has had a thumbs up, four, okay, so four, and...
Yes.
And you said that it should be a resolution, correct?
Well, I think that an acknowledgement is okay because it's a nationally-proclaimed proclamation.
Okay.
So we can acknowledge that.
Okay, so that, so that was five, so that will make all of those acknowledgements. Thank you.
So for, can I just make sure I understand?
Yes, ma'am.
So for all the heritage months and all that, we're just going to read off a list, and that's it?
Yeah, because acknowledgement is accepted of the truth, so we're, we understand that that's what it is, so we're accepting that month is for that day, that's what acknowledgement is.
And that does not preclude things from happening within the schools, but it is saying that the board is acknowledging it as, as an acknowledgement, not as a resolution. So I'm trying to catch all of those here.
The only recognition of all of the different heritages is, this month is this month, and that's it.
Is what?
We're basically just going to say then, for each of the heritage recognitions in each month, though, this is, you know, Irish-American month, and that's that.
But...
That's what you're saying, that's what an acknowledgement is.
Correct. So they'll be acknowledged, because you have, I mean, Polish-American, you, when you start really getting down to the nitty-gritty and start thinking about who we are in this district, there's how many different languages? So we don't have a resolution for each and every one of those students that we represent. So to me, if we can't put everyone on here as a resolution, we need to, you know, at least acknowledge the ones that we have.
Okay, so if we could, I'm sorry, Ms. Vaughn, I didn't see your hand.
I'm going to ask to make an exception for Hispanic Heritage Month, because Hispanic Heritage Month recognizes a plethora of different Hispanic cultures, and also, it's a huge part of our district. We have a huge Hispanic population. I don't know that when you have something like that, it's going to undermine the Irish-American, the Italian-American, it's...
Comments from other board members?
Ms. Kittens?
I totally disagree. I mean, if you're going to do Black History Month, Black History Month includes the people from the islands and from everywhere that are African-American heritage, so there are a lot of different segments of that as well. I just, I really think that whatever decision is made by the majority of the board regarding heritage months needs to be consistent.
Other board members?
Madam Chair?
Yes, please.
So do we have a delineation or a definition of the difference between heritage month and history month?
I don't believe so.
I don't believe we have a definition. What we might consider is that during the history months, history is being taught around that subject area, and the heritage month may just be a recognition of that without, without curriculum around it, but I don't know that that is correct.
Yeah, I mean, if you look at it, it's just an annual celebration of achievements. For, for instance, for Black History Month, it's an annual celebration of achievements by African-Americans, and a time of recognizing the central role of blacks in the U.S. history, so it's part of history, versus a cultural. That's, that's what this is.
Ms. Vaughn had requested an exception, so if we could do a consensus vote around that. Ms. Vaughn, would you repeat your request?
Yeah, I think that considering the huge number of students that are of Hispanic heritage, and Hispanic heritage represents many different Latino cultures, that we make an exception for that one heritage month.
Okay, if you will show me your votes, please, for that. One, two, three, four, five, Ms. Fisher, how do you vote? You vote on yes. Okay, so it was five to two, so it will remain an acknowledgement. Thank you. Okay, the next one is National Women's History Month. Thumbs, please.
Oh, for a, for a resolution?
For a resolution, if you want National Women's History Month to be a resolution. I see one thumbs up. Ms. Fisher, what is your vote?
I'll go with the majority.
Right now, the majority is no, so, or live with it, mostly a no, so that one would remain an acknowledgement. The next one?
May I make a comment?
Yes, ma'am.
As the summary of CongressLaw.gov gives a list of recommended resources for national observances and commemorative months, and has many of these on here, that might be part of some research we could do.
A long time ago, when we started talking about this.
I think that is where some of these came from.
Thank you, Ms. Fisher.
Thank you.
The next one is Read Across America Day. If you want that to be a resolution, please give a thumbs up.
I think so.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
That's one yes.
Isn't it a month, though, Read Across America Month?
It's a week.
A week?
There's an, there is one day that is recognized as that day, but schools generally celebrate it for a month.
Right.
Everybody goes out and reads on different schools.
It's based around Dr. Seuss's birthday, usually. Sorry, I did not see thumbs, if you could show those again, please, I think I only saw one thumbs up. Okay, that will remain an acknowledgement. Thank you. The next one is Earth Day. If you would like that to be a resolution, please give a thumbs up. Ms. Fisher?
An acknowledgement is fine.
Thank you, and that's the majority. The next one is Florida School Volunteer Month. If you would like that to be a resolution, Mrs. Fisher?
An acknowledgement is fine.
And that is the majority, so that will remain an acknowledgement. National Autism Awareness Month, if you would like that to be a resolution. I see three thumbs down, Ms. Fisher?
An acknowledgement.
Thank you, and that will remain an acknowledgement. National Military Appreciation Month. If you would like that to be a resolution, please raise your thumb.
That's already an acknowledgement, isn't it?
It was, but the one that I received today had listed it as a, as a resolution. Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
It was four thumbs down, so that one will remain an acknowledgement. National School Nurse Day? Looks like the majority agree with that, acknowledgement. National Teacher Appreciation Week, including National Teacher Day. Ms. Fisher?
A resolution, we're in education system.
I see one, two, resolution, three resolutions. Ms. Kittens, what is your vote? Four? Okay, so that one will be a resolution, that had four. There was discussion as to whether Sam Siriani Day should be included as, as even an acknowledgement, since it singled out one person within the district, so if they would like to be discussion around that.
Is there any criteria for either?
Possibly meeting the recognition of work of a district, of district employees, however, it is a single employee.
I think we're getting back into the same situation. There's many people, and I know that he has been in the district forever with Fort Myers High, and, but again, we have a lot of other members of this community who have been with this district forever, and have done quite a bit. I mean, yes, they did not coach football, but they've done a lot with the children and making sure that they were properly educated.
Ms. Patrica?
Can you go back to our criteria, please?
Yes, ma'am.
Recognition of the work of school district employees, Teacher Appreciation Week, School Nurse Day, I don't, that's employees, so it doesn't fit D.
Correct.
And then I thought that there was another criteria where it was some kind of a national or state recognition? Am I making that up?
No, I think you had conversation.
There was conversation, but it wasn't one of the agreed-upon criteria.
So I don't think it fits our criteria. I think if we're using this as a guide, it doesn't fit our criteria for either.
So if you, Ms. Fisher, did you have any comments?
No, ma'am.
If you agree to Sam Siriani Day not being an acknowledgement or a resolution, may I see thumbs up, please? It would not be mentioned at a board meeting.
Could you repeat what you're asking?
So Sam Siriani Day would not appear on an action agenda for the board. It would not be an acknowledgement, nor would it be a resolution. Ms. Fisher, what is your vote?
I'll go with the majority.
Well, you would be the majority maker. If you could, you put your thumbs back up, please. This would be, it would not appear on an action item. So I see one, two, three, actually, I see four now. So this one, we will take off of the list. The next one is National Bullying Prevention Month. If you would like that to be a resolution, thumbs up, please.
My vote is yes.
Yes, ma'am. One, two, three, that will make it a majority, so that one would be a resolution. National Red Ribbon Week? I see two thumbs down. Ms. Fisher said yes, three thumbs down. Okay, that one will remain an acknowledgement.
It's a national celebration.
Thank you. School Psychology Awareness Week? If you would like that to be a resolution, thumbs up, please. See, three thumbs down, four thumbs down. Okay, that one will remain an acknowledgement, Mrs. Fisher?
Yes, acknowledgement.
Acknowledgement, thank you. Okay, that, those are all of the ones that were from previous years, and we have some new ones to consider. There is LGBTQ History Month was the first one.
I think Ms. Gittens had a question, though, regarding that, because you have, we have two on there, the LGBTQ History Month and the Pride Month.
And according to the Library of Congress, the one that is recognized is June, which is Pride Month, and has been for some time. So my suggestion, if you're going to recognize it in any way, that it should be June and not June and October.
Thank you. Ms. Patrica?
I would ask professional courtesy that we wait to decide on this specific item until after we have our board training. I am ignorant when it comes to this issue, and I do not feel qualified sitting here today making a determination, either yes or no, as to whether this should be a resolution and an acknowledgement or nothing. So I would ask my colleagues to please extend a professional courtesy, allow me the time I need to get the training I need, receive the information I need from staff, and then revisit this issue when that training has taken place, please.
Ms. Morgan?
Yeah, so I would disagree. Go ahead and make a decision, and then after the training, it's not until October if we choose to put it back on.
Other board members?
But I don't want to vote against something I don't know, and I have to vote no based on my level of knowledge today.
Madam Chair, I would agree with Ms. Patrica to wait until we have our training. And then I would also ask that board members take an opportunity to research Red Ribbon Week.
I'm sorry, Ms. Fisher, what was the last thing that you said?
I said I would ask for my board members to research Red Ribbon Week before making the final decision for that not to be a resolution.
Thank you.
May I make a statement?
Ms. Gittens?
I understand that you're saying wait until the training, but we also have to keep in mind the facts about LGBTQ, that we do have a pretty extensive training in the GSA clubs and all of the things that are going on around that. And my first question, though, was, are we going to recognize June and October? And I think that's a decision that we need to decide on whether we've had the training or not. But with the extensive amount of training and involvement in our schools, I don't see how we can just put this off and say after the training, we'll decide if we're going to recognize it, because it is a part of our system as we sit here. So my first question is, are we going to do two months or one month, and then make that decision if you feel later on?
Ms. Vaughn?
I agree that it should be one or the other. I think that I prefer the one that says History Month, because that's more in keeping with the others than we have said resolution. Also, as I said earlier, the schools already during this time send out quite a bit of information from the schools themselves. And I think also anti-bullying is that month, and I think that's a good blend of things. And so I'm going to go on record of saying I would select LGBT History Month in October. I would support that as a resolution.
If we could go back first and come to consensus around Ms. Patrica's request to postpone the vote on National Pride or LGBTQ History Month. Did you have a comment first, Ms. Jordan?
No, Ms. Patrica had a comment.
I was just going to, if I may respond to Ms. Gittens through the chair. Ms. Gittens, you're aware of GSAs in our schools? I'm not aware of that. I've not received that training. I don't have that information in front of me. So again, I'm asking as a professional courtesy that I be allowed to come to the table with the full amount of information that for some reason you have and I don't, before I make a decision. And that's not an attack, I'm simply restating.
I'm not stating that. What I'm saying is, we have been privy to quite a bit of information about LGBTQ, even at the FSBA conferences and et cetera, et cetera. We, you know, do know quite a bit about it. And my point still remains that it is in the schools. And the question is to recognize or acknowledge that the curriculum is in the schools, in the GSAs, and with the administrators and the training that goes on. I don't, I don't know that doing the training is going to change people's minds as to whether it should be recognized. I mean, I just don't understand, and I'm not taking it as an attack.
One piece of the training will include what is currently being done in schools, what actions are being taken, so that may have an impact. Ms. Vaughn?
I'm going to say that we came prepared to this meeting to vote on these, and I think I agree with Ms. Gittens that the training, extensive training, will be, you know, getting into some of the terminology and some of the things we don't understand, you know, what's binary, and what are the pronouns, those specifics. But we've discussed this before, and there was a session on it during FSBA. And again, if we're prepared for this meeting, we should be prepared to vote, and I would support resolution for just one of the two.
So maybe can we figure out which one, the Pride Month or the History, which I believe History is more in line with education?
Could we first see if everyone agrees that we should go ahead with the vote and take Ms. Patrica's request first, and then we'll go from there? So Ms. Patrica would like to postpone making a decision around LGBTQ History Month or Pride Month at this time?
If I could be more specific, as I'm asking for a professional courtesy from my colleagues.
Yes, ma'am. So if you will agree to extend that professional courtesy to Ms. Patrica, thumbs up, please.
To extend the courtesy? Is that what we're saying, or voting? What are we?
If you're going to postpone the vote, to extend that courtesy to Ms. Patrica, who is asking to postpone the vote. Ms. Fisher, what is your?
Yes.
Two? So we have two yes, two that can live with it, and three no's. So live with it, we will postpone if we have two that can live with that. Okay, so we will wait on that decision.
I'm sorry, point of order, if there were three for one, and then the can live with it, don't those go with the majority vote of the three?
They're not a no. Live with it is not a no.
They would go with the majority vote.
Right. The majority vote was three to not postpone it.
So they will move over with the majority vote? Is that proper truths?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry, I was not aware of that. Okay, so in that case, then we do need to have a decision around those. The next item that I heard related to this was, do we, do you want to choose one month as opposed to two months? And I'm seeing lots of nods there. There's at least four that say one month, thank you. Okay, so let's start with LGBTQ History Month. If this is the month that you would like to consider as a resolution, we're not saying it would be a resolution, but if this is the month you would like to consider as a resolution, thumbs up.
May I ask a question first, before I would vote on that? And I know he's talking, but Dr. Spiro?
Who are you asking a question to, Cindy?
No, I was asking for Dr. Spiro, actually.
Dr. Spiro, she has a question for you.
The question I have is on, you know, what is being done in school? Do we recognize Pride Month at all in schools?
Typically, a Pride Month is not an event that is celebrated inside of every school. And just like you were saying, Ms. Gittens, most middle school and high schools have a GSA club, and oftentimes, they'll do an awareness campaign. But I would not say it's a systemic celebration across all schools.
Okay. And my point in asking that is that I think an acknowledgement, I don't know, either one of them, but that the Pride Month is not teaching and educating as a History Month is. And if we're taking out teaching of history of heritage and putting in teaching history for LGBTQ, I'm not sure that I can agree with that. I would agree with recognizing the Pride Month, and I don't know.
Ms. Chivinelli?
This whole subject is very delicate. It's delicate on both sides. So I think that we have to respect both viewpoints, and that's a viewpoint that people, some people don't understand it. And then you have the community itself that want awareness and to help understand it. So I think we have to, you know, define what, if we do a resolution, what expectations are we expecting, and action are we expecting at the school level? And so my recommendation is to possibly even, the LGBTQ community wants to be acknowledged.
Yes.
And we have to respect that, and I want to respect that. So my thought is, we don't have this, we have EDAC, and EDAC doesn't quite have that representation there completely. And so is there a way that we could even form a LGBT committee that would help aid in our awareness, the school's awareness, and the community's awareness? Because that is where we have a bit, we've had a lot of people here vocally speaking about this, and I think it's so important, it's just, we have to teach our children to be kind first. And so is it a kindness campaign? I don't know. That's why I'm saying, how about have an LGBT committee that can help us as a board? Because we don't have a full understanding, we are not, we are not there yet. So I think that a committee and giving them some, empowering the community and empowering the LGBT community by having some kind of committee would help with that. And I would rather hear what others have to say, but that's my thought on it.
Ms. Chivinelli, there is, I was that EDAC chair for two years, and we have, we had put a diverse group together, and I mean diverse, from every walk of life there. There is definitely representation of the community in EDAC. And when we were putting together the bullying policy, they came with all the information that they possibly had to give, and we worked on that, worked on that, to make sure that we were covering all aspects. So there is definitely representation there. It is just the fact that we, as a community, as board, you know, need to have more understanding of, I mean...
So we were almost, so we pulled something that no one understood why we pulled it. No one understood why it was on there, what was the expectation of a resolution. So I mean, you know, I just don't think that we did the right thing completely. It became on the agenda without our knowledge. And then it was pulled, and yet we had no action. A resolution requires an action. So I, the community needs to understand what that will be, prior to it being a resolution or prior to that month.
Right, but I don't think...
So we missed the boat.
We're just trying to figure out if we're even, what, we're having it. We didn't say it's a resolution, acknowledgement, we haven't decided that yet.
And there is a little additional information from Mr. Bradley. If I can just read that, and then we'll get right to you, Ms. Vaughn. Mr. Bradley noted that students and most faculty are not in school in June. Pride Month is about the civil rights struggle of the LGBTQ community. History Month is about the contributions of LGBTQ citizens to all fields in America. Okay, Ms. Vaughn?
Okay, I'm going to reiterate what Madam Chair said, because I'm the current liaison, and I can tell you absolutely, we have representation. We have gay, we have representatives who know about transgender, and we had quite a lengthy discussion on it a couple of months ago, which is the recommendation, remember, I brought the recommendation from that committee, our advisory committee, for the training. But as part of that, they also, they said, "We trust you to bring forward our concerns." And so as that liaison, and following through with their trust in me, you know, I can live with doing Pride Month instead, but I really think that we need to choose one of those and recognize contributions, because there's a significant population in our schools. And, you know, those children in the school face real challenges, and I think understanding is important, and you also have to remember the parents of those children. And representing what our advisory council said, they put their trust in me, and I brought the recommendation forward for the training, and I'm also going to say that they were very clear, it was unanimous, to have some kind of, have a resolution.
Thank you. Ms. Fisher, before we...
Yes, please.
Yes, thank you. Okay, so the LGBTQ History Month is an international... Okay, so the LGBTQ History Month is an international effort. We are, our Diversity and Inclusion Department have offered lots of training. You know, there is a statistic that around 30% or more of our students and our staff and our parents are either LGBTQ, are they part of that population. So I would vote to have LGBTQ History Month in October and to support that. And I also am anxious for the training, because I see that we have a lot of misunderstanding and a lot of not understanding about this issue, and it is a very big issue. Anytime you watch TV, pay closely attention to the commercials and the makeup of the groups that are represented. This is a very prominent issue at this point in time, and we want to make sure that we are inclusive of everyone and that we are not discriminating against anyone because of the way they may look or think or, you know, what they choose to do. So, thank you. And thank you, Ms. Vaughn, for representing the EDAC stance.
Thank you, Ms. Fisher.
Thank you. So if we could start with LGBTQ History Month in October, if you would like to have that as a resolution, thumbs up, please.
Could you read what Chuck Bradley sent again, the definition?
He said that students and most faculty are not in school in June. Pride Month, which is June, is about the civil rights struggle of LGBTQ community. History Month is about the contributions of LGBTQ citizens to all fields in America.
And can I just make a statement, based on just the last words that you said, that we are basically sitting here and actually saying that the contributions of all of the different heritages in this majority-minority district will not be recognized, but we will recognize LGBTQ. That's my only concern. And as a minority, I have nothing against recognizing the LGBTQ History Month. I do have something against not recognizing the contributions of the majority of our district. So that the students, as we're educating them, we are not educating them on their particular heritage and what they contributed to? I'm not against LGBTQ, but I am against the fact that you will accept that and you will not accept Black, Hispanic, Irish, whatever else. That is a concern.
Yes, please. I thought we did. Am I mistaken?
No, you didn't.
No, we accepted-
An acknowledgement for all of them.
Black History Month, National Black History Month was a resolution. All of the other heritage months were acknowledgements.
Madam Chair?
Yes, please.
Just, I'm not going to engage in consensus on these items, because I don't feel qualified, and I believe under statute, the only time I have to vote is at an action meeting. So I'm just not going to participate in consensus. Thank you.
So you're saying the only one that is a resolution now is Black History and not Hispanic?
No, because remember, there was a request to make an exception and have Hispanic Heritage Month as a resolution, but that did not meet a majority.
And I don't remember when the Black History Month, Ben, Patricia?
I don't recall Black History Month either.
History Month was, there was consensus around that before we got to the Irish-American Heritage Month, and then when the Irish-American Heritage Month was, that's when the decision was, when it said specifically Heritage Month, that consensus was it would be an acknowledgement. And the ones that I mentioned, when we, when we had that consensus vote, were Hispanic Heritage Month, Italian-American Heritage Month, American Indian, Jewish, and Caribbean-American. Black- Madam Chair? It's not included in that unless you would like to go back and revisit that.
Ms. Morgan?
It was, I thought, oh, sorry.
Madam Chair, I think we need some clarification, because my understanding of that consensus was that all of the heritage months would be acknowledgement. And then a recommendation to the board, if you're looking at LGBTQ History Month, that is somewhat of a heritage month, that could also become one of the acknowledgements, just like you're treating all of the other heritage months.
Ms. Morgan?
No, so I was going to say the same thing, Mr. Bruno, sorry.
And that's fine, if we want to go back and consider the National Black History Month as a heritage month, that's, that's fine. That was not included in the list when we first did it, but I can certainly consider that one as well.
Madam Chair, I'm concerned about not treating all of the different heritage months the same. That's, that's one of the concerns that I have.
I have been saying that since the beginning. Yes, I feel the same.
So then let's go back to National Black History Month. Is there consensus that that will be an acknowledgement in alignment with the other heritage months rather than a resolution?
I don't know. I think that will be a war.
One, two, three, four, Mrs. Fisher?
I'm going to refrain from voting right now, because I think that we need to treat everyone the same. I think there are probably laws that govern that, and I'm just not comfortable with this conversation the way it is proceeding today. I think we can't pick and choose, I think we need to make a decision that's going to encompass all of the potential ones, and as a resolution to do a resolution for Black History and Hispanic Heritage and LGBTQ.
For Hispanic.
I mean, those are big national celebrations and have been around for a long time. Some of the other heritages, I don't see how we can discriminate, and frankly, after being on the boards for 10 years, I'm not sure why moving a resolution, which takes about a minute, is such a big problem.
Thank you. I totally agree.
Well, and I really hate to say this, is there, instead of, because we do have a lot of different conversations going on right now, is it possible for us to put a hold on this and come back to complete this? Because it is 12:08 right now, and-
But Ms. Jordan, may I just please say this? We have been kicking this can down the road forever. We have to make some type of decision. We have told the LGBTQ people since October, the beginning of October, that we would make some type of different decision at the next meeting, the next meeting, then it was January. This needs to be resolved. I mean, if we-
I don't think that this is about the LGBTQ. To me, it's not. It's about much more than that, and we will be having conversations about that. What I do see is that, what Ms. Fisher said, we have to be able to treat everyone the same. So if we're going to decide on, and we had those guidelines of what that looked like, but if we, and I don't know if that's the whole guidelines that we really need to be looking at, but I think that if we're going to recognize one, we cannot not recognize others, because we have to make sure that there is equality, we have to make sure that everybody is treated equal. So that's, that is an issue when we have these history months, and, I mean, they've never celebrated Italians, we do, because I'm Italian, but it's, it's never been one, it's always been two. We've always had the Black History Month, and I believe it was Hispanic, and the other ones, you know, were edit on lately. So do we, we need to figure out, are we going to honor everybody, or are we going to pick and choose who we're going to honor? Mr. Pre, Bruno, do you have any comments or?
My recommendation is that the board treats everyone the same. If you're going to do resolutions, you do resolutions across the board, for anything that's heritage-related, History Month. If you're going to do an acknowledgement, you do that across the board.
Thank you.
Yes.
So, Ms. Vaughn?
May I suggest, then, that we revisit the heritage items that we, across the board, said we would not do resolutions, and I would suggest that we, because I guess you could say, you could make an argument that Black History, LGBTQ History, it's just the semantics of choosing the word "history" instead of "heritage." So, again, somebody said, "It's not that big a deal, it doesn't take that long," and I really think it's important, I'm, because I'm kind of upset about the Hispanic not being recognized, and I'm seeing the handwriting on the wall about the Caribbean.
Right.
And, you know, really, thinking about it, it's, it's all of these groups, and we don't want to exclude someone, so I really would like to see all of them recognized in a-
Okay, Ms. Chivinelli?
And the only question I have too, regarding resolutions, who actually writes the resolution? Where does it come from?
Madam Chair? Some of them have come from, from groups, from outside groups, but most of them have come, I believe, go ahead, Ms. DeP, Pre, Bruno?
We have a databank of all of the resolutions, most of them are based on whatever the governor has stated or the president has stated, so that's the basis of them.
Thank you.
So that, I think that's important, because that's what the community needs to understand, that it's not, it's not just coming from us, it's coming from a higher level. And I think, so I think that's really important, because that's, there's just, there's so misunderstood, this misunderstood, you know, everybody's misunderstanding the resolutions versus acknowledgement, they're all important, so we're just trying to find a happy medium. Thanks.
Okay, so then, let's, if we can go back then, I'm sorry, Ms. Vaughn.
No, that's okay, so let's-
If we can go back and then, based on what Ms. Vaughn had just mentioned, with the national, the heritage and the history, and look at that as a resolution versus the acknowledgement, but make sure that everyone is included. Because we want to make sure that our community understands that they are part of us, and we do appreciate them, so I would ask that we reconsider and look at that again as far as-
So the consensus vote then would be to take all of the heritage or historical months that had to do with heritage, such as Black History Month, Hispanic Heritage Month, Italian-American, American Indian, Jewish-American, Caribbean-American, I think I got them all, and then also LGBTQ History Month was included in that, is that correct?
And Women's History.
And Women's History.
And Women's History Month. And Women's, thank you.
Can I ask a quick question? Okay, looking at, if everybody just looked at, on November 3rd, 2020, the Library of Congress has a list, and I think if we were to use that list, we would keep ourselves out of a lot of trouble. It is a nationally stated list, and it has, and we can choose the ones from that. It's just right there. I mean, we-
I believe that's where, and I'll double-check with Mr. Eadie, but I believe that's where the original list came from.
Yes, I think that's correct as well.
Okay.
So if we could, well, we can't have a motion, but if we can have a consensus on what Ms. Vaughn had mentioned regarding the history, heritage, and making those resolutions, so we are covering everyone.
And it's also what Mr. Pre Bruno suggested.
Yes, also what our attorney has suggested, and that way we are not leaving anyone out.
If it's a heritage-
Heritage or history.
It is a resolution.
Resolution.
Heritage or history, so if we could see a thumbs up, please.
Please have a consensus on that. Ms. Fisher?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Ms. Chivinelli?
I can live with it.
Okay, two, three, four, there were five. Okay, so all of those, and I'm not going to try and do that right this second, but I will make a note.
Thank you.
All history and heritage will become-
We will get through this.
Resolutions. We're almost there. Okay, so we only have two additional ones. We have Veterans Appreciation Week, and then we have Holocaust Education Week. So Veterans Appreciation Week.
Acknowledged.
If we have, if we have Jewish-American Heritage Month, then wouldn't that cover Holocaust? And it's a heritage, so, and we do recognize that, we even have days off school for Jewish holidays, so I would think Jewish-American Heritage would cover all of them.
Could we go back to the veterans first, and then we'll come to that one, please?
Thank you.
Veterans Appreciation Week, if you would like that one to be a resolution for veterans.
That's acknowledgement.
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 If you would like, so we're saying an acknowledgement. Okay.
May I comment?
Yes, please.
Thank you. Okay. In 1999, officially designated by Congress, Military Appreciation Month takes place every year through the entire month of May. Every year, the President issues an annual proclamation reminding Americans to celebrate this patriotic month that pays tribute to those who have sacrificed so much for our freedom. And we have many local organizations and governmental agencies that do celebrations visually, raising the flag and having parades and things like that. Just want to comment.
Fisher said, do we have, are we still wanting to do acknowledgement?
Ms. Fisher, are you asking to revisit National Military Appreciation Month?
I just wanted to make a comment that it is a very big thing nationally, and it's a way of celebrating our patriotism and those who have given their lives to keep us free like we are.
And our J, ROTC programs also participate in that, I believe.
Yes.
Okay, so-
Is that one on here?
Yes.
Yes, it's back up, it's on line 20.
It's right, but right below LGBTQ.
Line 20.
Oh.
National Military Appreciation Month.
So we have National Military Appreciation and Veterans Appreciation.
Madam Chair? Are those listed? The Appreciation Month is in May, Veterans Day obviously is in November.
Yes. Mr. Pre, Bruno?
So it's 12:30.
Yes, ma'am.
You have another workshop at 1:00.
Yeah.
Okay, so please, can we, the Veterans Appreciation, we still think that that's an acknowledgement?
I believe Ms. Fisher had asked to revisit the May National Military Appreciation Month.
If we're doing National Military, I don't think we need veterans as well.
I agree.
Okay, so National Military Appreciation Month, if you would like that to be a resolution, resolution, thumbs up, please. One, two, three, four, okay, that one we will now make a resolution, and then, I'm hearing that Veterans Day would then be an acknowledgement, is that correct? Thumbs up, if Veterans Day is then an acknowledgement.
Yes.
Thank you. And Holocaust Week.
Uh-
You would like it to be a resolution? Please raise your thumb.
Well, you're already doing the Jewish-American Heritage Month, so-
Yes, we are. Ms. Fisher?
Yeah, I think, I think we need to be consistent, so I'm with the majority.
Okay.
So that would be an acknowledgement.
So that one will be an acknowledgement, thank you. All right.
May I comment again about the military thing? I think that November is the time when we do most of our celebrations, even at our schools. November, whether it be November, the 11th day, the 11th month, since the end of World War II, and that is why we celebrate and we recognize and thank not only those who gave their lives with the living dead and with the dead. So I really think that November would be the more appropriate time for the military appreciation.
Which is, which is the veterans one?
The veterans, yeah, I think that's the most popular, and that's when you have most of those celebrations happen.
And Dr. Atkins, may I ask you, because I know you served, and thank you for that, is it better to have veterans as a veteran of it, or a military? As a person who has served?
The Veterans Day, for me personally, it is more meaningful, and I think that it's probably more widely celebrated across- probably more widely celebrated across our school district.
Thank you. So can we, is that, would everybody be in agreement of switching that military to the veterans?
Okay.
Great.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, and then I just want to clarify one last thing. Please don't make me regret this. So with LGBTQ History Month and Pride Month, were we doing, are both recognized, or was it only the History Month that is a resolution? That was my understanding. Is that correct?
The History Month was a resolution, correct.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. And with that, board members, we have consensus on your resolutions and acknowledgements. Thank you very much for your time. We'll see you back at 1:00. Ms. Jordan, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you so much, appreciate it.